Within the buffer still?
Yeah, so the same thing, the parking lot has not changed. We have not moved the parking lot to any other location. What we're doing differently is is really we're just taking the existing blacktop granules that were there. Removing everything, we're putting the water filtration system underneath and then putting blacktop in and running off well stormwater as appropriate. That was the big change that we did on this past rendition. The other thing that we had a confirmation on, I know it's been back and forth, is the question of what did the church and the school want to do with their existing buildings? So they've made a confirmed choice to say that they're not planning on keeping the building, that we're planning on taking the building down, and they have no further plans to do any other building in that location. The only thing that I had mentioned to Aaron in one of our conversations was with the understanding that the existing school needs to stay in operation until the new building is built. What we would do is do everything we need to do and at that point disconnect the lines and work, you know.
When you pointed out that the existing school?
Yes.
I see.
So for example, the project takes us a year, probably a year later, but we would put it into the works to make sure that's done and cleared. And then at that point, we probably would turn it back into a grassy area. I think we would have all the parking that we need and then some to cover for both schools, the faculty. It also covers originally, when we originally did the expansion and added the sanctuary, it was going on three years ago now. That was the big issue then was making sure we had enough parking for that. So at this point, the criteria is we meet all criteria for parking based on the maximum student enrollment of 90 people. And that also includes the coverage of the faculty for the existing school and for any parent student pickup.
And you said you calculated that to be 62 parking spaces or 63?
63, yes. Right now, there is a current of 10 or 12 faculty members. And with the enrollment, they're not expecting to do any more expansion on the faculty based on.
Can we comment on it?
Yeah, first I was gonna ask Aaron to give us his thoughts and then.
So the memo that I sent around for this one is, it's a brand new one. I didn't want to keep jumping on top of previous comments because I think some of them were addressed. So this memo is kind of like the fresh look and I think you got a copy, right?
Yep, very, when it came in last minute.
Last, it came in Friday.
Okay, Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, so the access road, I guess, you know, it might be best to have the fire department see if this is really warranted because it is causing a lot of issues on coordination and required referrals and just general disturbance and permits you might need. I don't know, were any of you on the board when that sanctuary was approved back then?
Yeah.
Did this issue come up?
I do not recall anybody talking about a road around the back.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good idea in that it's something that they're proposing as something that they think would be helpful. But maybe the fire department should take a look and see if they agree or not. And if they don't really think it's necessary, we get rid of a bunch of disturbances around the back ends, retaining walls, the wetland encroachment issue.
Doesn't mean that even in an emergency, you couldn't get a vehicle back there to fight a fire potentially or to do.
Well, you know, in the truth, I mean, for me, the way I look at it, I guess I could take both. As a builder, I can take both sides of it. In one sense, I say, well, gee, they've been operating this way for the last 30 years. And we thank God that nothing's ever happened, right? But you never know if there's something gonna happen in the future. So, you know, just because something never happened doesn't mean that something would happen, right? And in my mind, I'm thinking, well, gee, if I'm gonna be here with a bulldozer or a tractor, does it make sense to say, let's create something that makes it a benefit for everybody? Now, the thing is, if you've been on the property, I mean, technically, there is a flat, grassy area in there that could a, could a fire truck speed by there? I'm sure that could be, right? Question becomes, do they come back there when it's rainy and muddy and then not be able to get traction? Or is there snow? Or is it in perfect conditions? I would say in perfect conditions, you could probably, even on a septic system, if you understand, you could still even drive over a septic system. That's not, you know, a problem. And then you say, okay, we can come in from that access or we can come in and try to create something from this back section, which is really not an issue at all, and it just stops there and you come in from two points. And then it's just, you know, trying to figure a way, it's not gonna be really conducive to making a real good turnaround. Because we have, in a sense, a small mountain or a small hill that's rocky and everything else to try to create some kind of a turnaround there would probably be futile. It would probably then say, just have a straight access road they could pull in and just try to back it back out again. All I was trying to do was just bring something to a benefit for them, but I was also looking to try to do something for the town to say, hey, we're trying to do something better. And I'm certainly not trying to create any kind of hardship or create more disturbances or issues on that end. It was really just, I gained nothing out of it.
Are these buildings gonna be sprinkled?
The building? No, based on the size of the building, we're doing a fire rated structure. So with capacity, square footage, and a fire rating, we're not requiring to do that.
What about access and egress from that side of the building?
What about the access? Yeah, so we have, even based on the number of students, and we have more than enough access, really, we have three points on both sides of it. And we even have a rear, I would say, emergency access from the utility mechanical room, as you might say, too. There's also gonna be access through some of the egress windows as well. So more than enough that way. I mean, it's a wood structure, but the wood structure is gonna be a fire rated wood structure. And there's gonna be fire rated acoustical ceilings, there'll be fire rated fire wall in it. So there's a lot of pauses on that end of it.
I think Aaron makes a good point about why don't you talk to the fire department and find out what they think is the best is? Because you're gonna have all of these issues. You have a stream here, you have a stream here, and there's a wetland application that we would need. There's a wetland application that probably the town of Clinton will need. Those are things you may need that anyway because of where the parking garage, parking is.
Yeah, we'll talk about the parking lot.
Would you think, Clinton, I'm sorry, now that we've moved and we're totally outside of the.
You're not totally out, though, I don't think.
Well, this is the line, right?
Right, but you're still in the town of Washington.
It's a hundred.
And you're still in wetland buffer with that road.
It's very close. And without a delineation, too. That's the other thing.
Need delineation, right?
But, I mean, the point I was trying to make was the planning board can make the referral to the fire department and just, you can, I don't know if it makes sense to have a cover letter with that or something, or to say that you have concerns about the disturbance this would result in. There might be some permitting issues, you wanna make sure, wanna see what your thoughts are about access here. The fact that the building's being proposed on like a current playground area, right? It's a flat area, it's open, you know, it's really, if they think they can get to enough sides of the building, they can definitely get in there, the driveway's adequate, the parking lot's adequate, it's gonna be paved. You know, I think it's just worth the planning board getting that formal referral to them because you have this in front of you for site plan and it makes sense.
The one thing that you said in here, Aaron, I thought was interesting and kind of something we should be thinking about now as we're giving recommendations, but Section 7 of the Wetlands Law clearly states that a no bench shall preexist unlawful activity. The expanded, changed, enlarged, or altered except in a forms of division to. Which, you know, this was in existence during the time, but it shouldn't be expanded, changed, et cetera.
Right, well, so that's with regard to the parking area? Where they're proposing some stormwater updates?
Wouldn't that also apply to a building in the buffer?
Yeah, because the driveway goes through the buffer currently.
I think it applies to both. And if that's what the code says, this seems to be an expansion, enlargement, a change.
Which would require a wetland permit.
I think we're gonna, I mean, I think it means.
I'd rather see the plan change rather than proceed to a wetlands permit. I'm not sure we can agree on the wetlands permit.
Change.
Change what way? I don't know.
It's not for me to decide, but you could, you could change the, certainly the driveway to go, start this road over here, a little bit higher, and come back down around it. Make that turn out of here. And you can expand the parking lot, add a parking lot over to the left, eliminate that part over there. So make this, make that the one way, and make this come in over there.
Yeah, and I hear everything you guys are saying, and respectfully, I understand exactly what you're saying. I mean, if you're, we're already having a road that's already going through here. You're already in an area where there's already cutting through the buffer. In my humble opinion, this right here really amounts to nothing as far as a change. Logically, if an emergency truck's gonna come in, they're not gonna wanna come in and make a sharp turn to go back in. I like your idea, respectfully, I think being able to come out of it works. What that does is it does force, because there is a road going around the other side of it, it would force emergency vehicles to come around and come around and come back this way. For the sake of 10 feet where that is, and I know, you know, the law is the law, the law. You drive 55, that's the law, and things, I respect that.
We just don't have the discretion, though. I'd love to, I understand what you're saying, and oh, yeah, this seems like nothing, we're doing all these other things, but we can't do that. We are constrained by the law. If you're in that buffer, we have to go to a wetlands permit. We just can't, we don't have a way around because it's all just a little bit or it's better than another option. So we just have that.
Sure, so, but you have the means to make the change. You have the means on the plan to make the change.
There are other options.
There are other options, right, so. And at the end of the day, I certainly wouldn't want this to be something now where it's another six months of working through it. And I don't, I don't know what it would take for the wetlands buffer and if that's even something that's gonna be even passed. If that were the case, I would either go with your idea, move it that direction and say call it a day or whatever. But the question is, is there a question on this backside, Aaron, as far as where that road wants to go? I mean, or is it really more of this dotted line where it's cutting across there that's the test of concern?
Yeah, it's really where the buffer is. And it's not just that spot, but it's the parking lot.
Parking lot, 11 spaces in the parking lot.
So the wetland buffer line also crosses the parking lot area where you're proposing to put in stormwater infiltration, your stormwater management system. And the code.
But let me just be clear, your parking garage, that you, parking area that you've marked there already exists.
Already exists.
So what you're talking about doing is digging it up to put this special drainage underneath?
Right, because they've done nothing for 35 years, right? So what we're doing at this point is putting in the proper drainage and doing what.
But the only problem is, if you do that, we are constrained again by the wetlands law.
By current law, which was non-compliance.
At the time, so they, so what you have preexists, the wetland law and a lot of other things. So it is what it is. But if you do this, we are constrained by the law that you would have to apply. Unless you move it out of the buffer, you need to have a wetlands application.
Yeah, so if that be the case, then you're, if you're saying that this is already an issue, which it sounds like there are, then why not, you know, I'm gonna end up applying for it? It doesn't make sense to try and move.
There are two different towns. One is a wetlands application to the town of Washington and the other is a wetland application to the town of Clinton.
Okay, so I understand, if we're in the town of Washington, why does there need to be another one? I'm just asking for.
The way you have it now, there doesn't need to be one in Clinton because you're totaling in the town of Washington.
Right, and so I guess the other question, because I'm not experiencing this in you guys.
I don't understand that.
He moved it, he moved it, he moved this road from down here.
It's within the town of Washington, but if he is within 100 feet of the buffer, if the same law applies in the town of Clinton, I would think he still has to apply in the town of Clinton.
Because that pond and that portion of the stream are in Clinton. The thing is, the code also has this language in it, and I put it in the memo to talk about it. When it talks about regulated activities, and it defines regulated activities as those which occur or are proposed to occur within the boundary of a wetland, the boundary of a water course, or within the controlled area, that's the 100-foot buffer, of a wetland or water course, independent of whether the wetland or the water course or the controlled area is separated by one or more parcels or municipal boundaries.
So it doesn't matter about the boundary line?
I guess not. So. The Wetlands Code is a tricky one to read, but Howard was involved in writing it, but does that basically mean that? He was. Does that basically mean that regardless of the fact that there's a town line in here? Because the project's in Washington, it's, it's to go through the Washington Wetlands Law only?
No.
Both towns?
Both towns is how I, that's what I read it to.
That's where the conundrum arises. I would suspect you have the, oh, by the more restrictive one in the end. I don't know that.
I don't know what theirs is. I don't know whether theirs is more or less restrictive than ours.
Yeah, I can't comment.
But speaking of the town of Washington's wetland, we don't, it really has to come down, my understanding is it has to come down to, if you're gonna give a wetlands permit, which is to do activity within the wetland or the buffer, that it would have to be that there are no other options for you. Which has happened, which has happened, where something was built a long time ago and there are no options for anything else other than to disrupt that area, in the safest, best way. But in this case, it seems like there are a lot of other options. And so I can't imagine that how we would grant a wetlands permit to take on that activity to change, you know, as the code said, something that's already not in compliance. It's to make it more not in compliance, if there are other options. And it does seem that there are options. One, not to do that road around the back because it's, this facility's existed like this for a long time. And then two is the parking lot area, which, I don't know how many lots of it, it's maybe like 20% of the parking lot is in the buffer.
11 spaces.
Did you count the space? Yeah.
There's a certain percentage of the parking lots, it's what's within the buffer.
You're right, yeah, about 11 spaces. But the thing is, the paving of the parking lot, in addition to putting in the stormwater, can count as altering it, right? And you're altering a pre-existing lawful condition. So it's both the paving, like the whole formalizing of it and making it a parking lot with, you know, the striping and the paving, plus the excavation that you need to do to put in the stormwater, all counts as altering an existing parking lot. Even if they wanna keep the parking lot, they still can, but if they, maybe they don't pave it, maybe they don't put in the stormwater.
They can do maintenance to it, just basic, regular maintenance. But to improve the parking lot and the permanent seems to not be in compliance with the code then.
I can tell you that I do know that they're really looking to improve the parking lot to a paved surface for everything from maintenance to gravel and dirt being pushed up and plowed and really be able to correct where water's going. It develops potholes and things are running off, it's a hodgepodge of stuff. To me, in the long run, it makes sense to improve it all the way around so you can correct where water's gonna go and you can correct all the stuff.
No doubt.
So it leads to me to say that it's not, we just can't take the parking lot and move it over here, move it over here. It's really gonna, where the spacing is to put the correct backing up and turning of roads, it's gonna, where we're going with the conversation is it makes sense that it, it's not a lot of options. If anything, here, this road, I can see, fine, get rid of the road, we're fine, and use your ideas and go the different direction. But I don't see this at all, spending enough time with the engineers and the property anywhere else to go with this. New list of parking was offsite and that's.
I could make a suggestion if you'd like.
Sure, I would be open to it. So this area, the parking lot right here, that's in the buffer. These 11 spaces are in the buffer. Eliminate that part there, take these 11 spaces and put them up along there.
And you can do that.
If you guys were just wondering, that's where the buffer line is, right there. And that's the number of, the area that's within.
Yeah, the memo has a red line, I did my best tracing it.
That's just your suggestion, you don't have to.
Yeah, that was a big help.
I'm making that same.
That's the part of the parking lot that, I just can't see how you would get a wetlands permit to do that.
Well, I mean, there is an analysis. So I just wanna caution the board against reaching a conclusion before it's being applied for that there is the option to get a permit. So if they determine that this is the plan that they're going to proceed with, then they apply for that permit and the analysis is conducted. I mean, I.
They're probably jumping ahead of ourselves, yeah.
I just don't wanna deter what's before you. I mean, I think that the conversation is good, but I think that this is a parking lot that has existed for an extremely long time, decades of time, next to a water course that is barely active. So I think that there are factors that would be considered. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be required because I do think, especially with the filtration, like the water system beneath it, that is a pretty substantial change. Because then where's that water going? Is it going into the river or the water course? So I think that there's factors. I just don't wanna put a blanket denial now if that is the option that they consider to move forward with.
So in that case, then the applicant would need to have someone like Steve Moreno locate the 100-foot buffer on the property, get a survey, and put it on plan.
He could do a delineation right here.
Whatever is required under, you know, we have a wetlands permit.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would be to just get Steve looped into this because he's your wetlands consultant and can opine on, you know, he can issue a memo on what he thinks is necessary for this to move forward and you can go from there. So far, I haven't shared it with him.
Okay.
And his thoughts on the potential impact as well? As was mentioned earlier, we're only speaking for the town of Washington Board in this analysis. We don't know how strict or stringent um Clinton is if you do seek into that buffer area.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the way you guys talk is that it's death if anybody tries to, you know, take a permit, you know, that's.
That's not the case, that is not the case. We give people wetlands permits often, then when they come to us and there is a plan that makes sense and we understand the reasons why and we go through the analysis that you'll see in the wetland law. If you read through that law, it tells you what it is we have to look at and why, you know, what, how we make our decisions. And we, we give wetlands permits. So if you come, you know, go through that, that application and explain to us why, which you've done some of that tonight, explain to us why you need to do this and why you can't do something outside of the buffer, we will review that.
That's great, I appreciate that. So is it my job to apply for that permit or who opens that up? Is that something that I go through you guys or how's that work?
That goes through us, it gets sent to the zoning administrator, which is the building inspector.
And the CAC.
And the CAC, we will, we always make sure you get it. And then, but that has to be filled out, I don't know who on your end does it, whether you're gonna be the person or whether they will hire somebody else to do it, but that's, that's where that goes.
And then who's the board or who's the party that does the actual reviewing?
We do that.
You guys do that?
It would be a similar discussion to the one we just had.
It's a planning board.
You just had a preview of it.
We already know you guys, so.
But they would bring in the towns, the planning board has a wetlands consultant, Steve Moreno from Tim Miller Associates out of Cold Spring. He's, you know, on call for wetland issues and he would get a copy of this and he would probably come to the next meeting that you're here and probably issue, he likes to visit the site first and issue some comments, talk to you about the plans and then we work together like as consultants to the board. But I defer to him on the wetland matters.
I mean, he'll definitely go to the site, he's very reasonable.
Yeah.
And he advises us on it.
That's great.
So do we need a formal motion to send it to Steve or we can just send it to Steve?
Wouldn't it make sense for him to apply first?
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't it a workshop? So there's no motion with respect to a workshop.
If this is the plan that you wanna move forward with, yeah, I think it makes sense to actually just apply for that additional action with this application. And at that point, we can get Steve looped in on it.
That's great.
Because that's how it works.
What other just added point to make to this, that's a benefit to the wetland people, right? Or the fact that if we take the house down, the septic and everything that's over in that area is being dismantled and abandoned.
Exactly.
That's good, that's a positive, that's a net positive, yes.
But it's still a disturbance in that area, so again, it's all counts towards that review. It is benefit though.
What about the fire department referrals, how are we handling that?
I don't think we can make referrals if we don't have an application.
Well, we have.
We have, he's made this application that, he hasn't made a wetland application, but he has this.
Yeah, I don't think the fire department will need to really worry about the buffer issue in the wetlands more than just, is this access road and access in general? And is his site plan look good to them?
I think you could do a motion for that to have it sent to the fire department. Because if they say that access is not a problem, we can leave a fire truck all around and then perhaps that'll change your analysis for the road.
Or that they don't need to go around the whole building, they can deal with it, okay. So can I get a motion to refer this to the fire department? And seconded? All in favor?
There's also the county referral, but we.
I want to do that to the final public hearing. I just think it'd be good to send this plan to get their feedback because I think that'll guide you.
Sounds great.
So referral to the fire department, you'll apply for a wetlands permit, we'll get the ball rolling with the wetlands consultant. There's other comments in here, but maybe we can wait till next time to get into those, like traffic.
Well, if you wanna, I just don't wanna drag it on. If we can get, if there's things that need to be dealt with, if time is working for me, I can handle those things.
Comments six and seven just has some considerations about the enrollment in relation to transportation for students, right, buses versus pickups. And I tried to give you a little guidance on what might be a good way to break it down because we're talking about what it looks like to me is 37 existing, 90 is what you're planning for is a maximum enrollment number, right? So the increment between those two, of that increment, how is it gonna look as far as busing and.
Traffic.
Air and drop offs and.
Did I make a note on?
You talked about numbers, I thought.
Yeah, I summarized what you gave us in that number seven. I just don't know if that's really answering it. There's a couple ways you can do it. You can go by, you can give us answers to these A through D. The best, to the best of your ability with working with the ownership about what they think based on trends currently. Another way to do it.
He's referring to the memo that he sent out.
Yes, my memo.
I just, okay.
Yeah, the one from Friday, comment number seven.
Because you're looking at that and I'm saying, yeah.
I took what you gave us in that response and I summarize it here for the board, but I also added my thoughts to it. And I think, like I said, A through D, there's some ideas about how you can break it down for us. And then another option, and it might come up in a public hearing, is actually quantifying it just based on like the standard that's used for trip generation for like a high school, based on the IT rate. Which, if you know any civil engineers or traffic engineers that do that work, like Levalle, just name, throw a name out there, I'm not saying use them, but a firm like them that does trip gen for something like this is relatively easy exercise and you can take a look at that.
I understand, I mean, my only comment back on that would be. I understand. I mean, my only comment back on that would be, based on current conditions now, there's only a few cars that are coming in, right? So if we use the ratio of that, because you, there's no one, we can't sit here and say, oh, there's a potential of, oh, there's going to be forty cars coming in. No one would know whether it's going to be the parents going to drop a child.
It has to be.
Or there's going to be bosses using it. But if we use the ratio of the calculations based on faculty that are driving now, which is not being increased, the principal has mentioned the fact that there was no plan for increasing busing. And so based on the parent student pickup, it went from six to twenty, which would be a high number based on a total of potential of ninety. That's the maximum. And you know, then we don't even know if there's going to be a potential of ninety, but if I use the math.
Would, would the engineer calculate the parking lot based on the occupancy of the building?
Based on the occupancy of the building?
Yeah.
You know, and it's, which is more than enough because it's less than a, barely the parking lot's based more on the traffic flow on a Sunday. Your major traffic flow is really on a Sunday.
And so that your engineer based the parking lot on the maximum traffic flow on a Sunday?
That's correct. Based on the.
Which the more.
Your codes, also your code requirements for, I think it was institutional, right? Was it institutional use, like?
Places of assembly.
For the sanctuary facility, right, places of assembly. They use that number as the max, which is conservative. I think it's more than what school would.
So you're within that then.
Yeah, so we're achieved that way. But if you think, you mean, do you want me to do another traffic study? I don't see.
I don't want to say the term traffic study just because I don't think projects big enough to warrant like a full-blown traffic study. I think just some information about like a trip, maximum number of trips in a peak hour that, based on an IT rate, which is institutional transportation engineers. It's a rate that traffic engineers use and they, there's a land use code for all different types of land use. There could be one for high school, private high school, public high school. I'm not sure. But maybe that's where we start and just get that number. Because that's a standard that seeker is, a hard look standard seeker is okay to, you know, you can do trip gen and satisfy that. So, you know, that's one option too. Instead of trying to guess and extrapolate.
And like you're, basically there's two times where, you know, there's, there's the morning.
Right, the AM and then there's afternoon with pickups.
And that's all there is. Do you want me to state that in a memo of the times that are being picked up? And how many cars are currently?
I, I think that the disconnect is, we don't really care about what's currently happening or even to extrapolate from what's currently happening. What we need to know is what the IT or similar sort of gauge like that estimates it could be. Because we don't know, right now you could have students where they carpool grade and there are five kids in a car and there's only one that. But next year, it could be that every single person comes in their own separate car or that there are buses or.
For the board's own knowledge, like for seeker purposes and impact thresholds when you're talking about traffic, a hundred peak hour trips is considered like, that needs a traffic study. This is not going to be a hundred peak hour trips in the morning or the afternoon on a typical school day. So I think if they can show that just based on a trip gen calculation, that could give you some comfort and satisfying your responsibilities for seeker.
And just to piggyback on that as well, remember that we're at ninety. You've committed to the ninety students and the design is for the ninety. So that's really what the traffic analysis has to focus on. Even if the principal says, we're not going to add more students, we're not going to get more buses. If you have fifty-three more kids coming, they're coming in some capacity unless they're walking. They're either coming in a car, they're getting dropped off, or there will be more buses. So I think the focus is kind of that balance of you've designed for ninety, but realistically, you know, you're in like the forty range, but we need the ninety. Because that's what.
Right, that's what I've been trying to base everything on.
Okay.
Parking, facilities, everything, even, even our septic system, everything based on ninety. So.
Great, yeah.
That's great. No problem on that.
Okay. So my guidance about, you know, these, these four bullets that I have in the memo, maybe we just, instead of doing that, you know, if you want, you can talk to a civil engineer that does traffic trip gen and put together a table using a rate that's acceptable and we can review that. I have folks in my office that do that and they interview us, engineer to engineer.
I'll reach out to you.
I can't give you recommendations to reuse, but if you know anybody, I'm sure you do, if you're in this field.
It's my.
Okay.
I think if there's any questions about the CAC's lighting memo while we're all here, I'm sure Howard has a.
Was, was that, my question was, was that a CAC memo or is that a Howard memo?
For me, it's a moment. We have talked about everything.
That's what I thought.
You'll probably get one with a little blue dot on it, raindrop officially. But this is me as a member of the CAC relating what we talked to at other meetings. It's all been talked about already on lighting and other questions. I, I think you're going to have everything in the lighting already.
So, but Howard, I don't want to interrupt you, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that this is appropriate time for you to be doing something that is not a CAC memo.
Well, it is a CAC memo. It's, as a CAC member, not as, not as a member of the public, I'm submitting a letter at this point in time.
Sarah, what do you think?
I think those comments are more appropriate during the public hearing. But I think to the extent that the board wants to entertain those comments so that it could, any issues could be addressed and that the plan could move forward, I don't think it would be.
That's okay.
We've done that in the past. It's not, I'm not, anything that hasn't been done before for years.
Okay, well, what does everybody think? Everybody want to hear it?
If you'd expedite the process for them, we'll have it come up later, but if you don't, it's simply.
Okay.
So it's okay.
Go ahead.
The other comment that I have coming to you and the group, you are redoing the wetlands permit, if I understand it correctly.
The application.
Application and permit. Well, there's, there's two sets of codes. There's one in the zoning code that I think you've worked on, and there's another set of criteria in the wetlands permit application itself.
Mm-hmm.
So which one is he used? And secondly, these have to be done by a licensed delineator and a licensed surveyor. You can't use partial access, for example. So that's just, you know, when you send in your, your wetlands map and everything. The question is, which one do you want to use on? I know you've worked on it.
We are looking at, Emily primarily is looking at the application and trying to revise the application. So right now, I think he has to use the current application. We don't have a new application. Once we do, we will send that out and we will discuss it with you at CAC, but right now, we have.
So what that means then is a whole bunch of requirements. I think it's section eight. It sounds like they really don't apply. And you normally ask for a variance to know section, I think it's section ten, the app I have in front of me. But there's some weird thing that only applies to special conditions and people think they have to answer everyone. What they normally do is they say to you or whoever, you like a variance from these particular ones. It says on the code, you can ask for a variance and some of those things. Waiver. Simplify your life because you're not, you're not building a lake, for example. So you don't have to go with all the lake specifications. But you'll have to work that out with you guys as with the variance.
I'm a little bit simplified, so.
Yeah. It's not really a variance, just because that terminology means something different, just an exception.
Waiver.
A waiver, waiver, that is the correct word, a waiver, for some of those things that don't really apply to your application. So you don't have to do those. And you will be doing, example, also if I may be corrected on this, but I believe it says one foot contours. I believe you get a variance, a waiver to do five foot contours of it.
Well, the law, the law says five foot, but for some reason, the application does not say.
But the application.
Who wrote the application, do you know?
It's been there forever. I don't know who did it.
Well, not forever. The law's only twenty-eleven, so it's not long.
Forever meaning since two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
This is two foot contours, isn't it?
I've been very curious over who wrote the application. That's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
I believe it's two foot. I will bet.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's already, you have on that side of it, two foot contours.
Did you have more questions regarding?
The lighting.
My sky compliance lighting. I think we talked about that last time.
Yeah.
And I think even on the original plan, it already met that, but we were confirming that we were going to stay with the dark sky compliance. And we're well ordered as far as our lamp height, our power, our tunnel power, something, and shielding on it. And then we're doing three, and we're also doing the hivers to shut things down. And so that way, by eleven o'clock, we're rolling here.
No, I had no questions about that. I didn't see it in writing anywhere.
It was on a, it was on a.
It may have updated and I missed it. I said I might have missed it. Originally, I didn't see it on Europe, but I only saw it on DLC's plan, by conservancy.
No, it was there.
Is it in writing now? And yes, so I don't.
Yeah, it's.
So the answer to that is you've probably covered that since I did that in the memo. And the other question on lighting, what about the building? Any, any structures? Lighting should apply to any structure that includes glare. Glare is a terrible thing. I don't know if you've experienced glare or not, but it could be, you could be half a mile away and you're sitting in your living room looking out the window and there's this light glaring into your window. So if glare is covered, and we talked about glare before, and there's a, there's a little notation about glare.
Okay.
You guys have this.
We have that. Do you have that?
I did.
Okay, so he has the memo. So I think we're good.
And the answer to that, really what we're looking at, again, there's, there's no nighttime activity except for there's going to be like a, a school football game or basketball, something like that. But otherwise, we're looking at just putting whatever is necessary to meet the requirement for emergency lighting. Give people the ability to get out the door, to see where they're going, to the cars, whatever it is. And then at that point.
No, that's all well and good, but I just wanted to be sure that you guys are considering applying it to other structures that this four, four poles, building and so on. I'm a retired high school teacher, so I know what high schools look like at night sometimes. And you don't really want to have them light like that, going somewhere at night.
Agreed.
So that, that was a section about glare and intensity and everything that. And the county has regulations on intensities, well, recommendations on intensity. So that's my comment.
Right, I'm with you.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I'll just add one more thing. So this is in front of the ZBA for the height variance. They set a public hearing for this February meeting and because they're an involved agency, seeker, as you're the lead agency, they can't really finish until you're done with seeker. So there's, it's likely, given where we are now, we're talking about for action items here, that, that public hearing just might stay open for the ZBA for a couple of meetings maybe. Until these issues are figured out with the planning board. So I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Susan, one of the, we have the secretary for Clinton asked us to formally declare the planning board of the Town of Washington as a lead agency.
Oh, and then we didn't, was there something, we didn't find it in the, why did we have to do it again? That's what I'm trying to remember.
So we, one of, or the planning board declared lead agency, there were no other involved agencies. There was no application before the ZBA and there is no live application before the Town of Clinton. So just according to the handbook, you have no obligation to give them notification. As courtesies, if you think that they may be involved based upon your initial review, then you can send correspondence where you declare lead agency and they can oppose it. They can concur. And we can work on putting together a form for use in the future. But as of now, I don't think that we missed anything. We could send them the minutes we wanted to from that meeting in December where the agency was declared. But technically, they wouldn't have to be notified at this point. They will need to be notified for the public hearing. They're entitled to that. And if this stays in the buffer, then they would be considered an involved agency and we would want to send over.
Because their secretary, their planning board secretary is under the impression that we need to give them some kind of form or.
She sent a sample form that she wanted.
Which is standard practice to send to an involved agency? I think they may be anticipating that they will be reviewing an application at some point.
Right.
They're concerned about the road and the traffic.
But currently, there's no permit in front of them. Definitely, there's no approval authority. They don't have any approval authority and can't really be an involved agency. They can be interested agency because of the fact that their, the site crosses their municipal boundary. But if they're not approving anything for this, they don't really meet the definition of involved. So we really didn't have to give them a lead agency notification.
We'll just send them the minutes then and tell them.
We could do that. And just a letter from the board that it was declared on December sixth. And should they have a permit, then we'll notify you.
Okay.
They could contest it. It's probably unlikely, but you do want to give them the option to make any environmental statements as well. And that would do it. It can also do a public hearing. And we mentioned in a meeting, the ZBA did acknowledge lead agency in the planning board and approved it. So they're, they didn't contest anything, so.
Okay. I think that's it then for tonight. Do we got something else?
Inch by inch, we'll make it that way.
We'll get there.
Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron, I'll look forward to your next draft.
Yeah, I think.
We all look forward to this business.
We'll get your wetlands permit application and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, so if you want me to, I'm going over the, I'm going over the, I'm trying to get that application as well, or early. But I, here's what I don't, I don't want to go next month if I didn't do it. And I'll say, oh, you need to get, whatever we can do is, I want to get as much information that I need to do for you guys to provide whatever it is.
And some of it, we don't know until next month because the fire department is going to look at the plan and you may revise, you may not revise, you know, we don't really know.
Yeah.
The fire department's pretty quick on respond, on getting back to us.
Yes, and I actually, I already made the referral for the ZBA, that height variance application. The Clinton Fire Chief got right back to me, very familiar. He goes to that church. So he doesn't have a problem with it. I haven't heard back from Milbra. But yeah, our Fire Chief, he gets back pretty quick, so.
So if that can happen first, then we'll see. If they don't think the road is necessary, then perhaps Clinton's wetlands issue goes away, but we still have Town of Washington to deal with for wetlands because of the parking lot.
Howard, did you say that Clinton is involved no matter what, regardless of the road, because of the location of the pond and the stream? Did you say that?
Just a question.
I'm asking Howard. He made a comment, he made a comment that Town of Clinton is involved in needs of wetland permit regardless of what, where the access road is because of the location of the stream and the pond currently. That he asked him to go before about Town of Clinton for wetlands permit as well. That was my concern or question for who has jurisdiction and the jurisdiction is more severe in one municipality than the other, whose size and you could argue, I'm just speaking off the top of my head. You could argue, well, it's the Town of Washington, therefore we prevail. But Aaron mentioned something about other counties when he was talking jurisdiction. So I don't know the answer to that question. So he's taking the road, the access road, out of the Town of Clinton? So this Town of Clinton doesn't have any direct concern? No. Anything out of, and he moves stuff out of the buffer for either town, then they're not involved anymore.
Right. So does that mean, like, not bothering the whole equipment at this point?
That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Until you know whether you're going.
Right, until you know you're going to be disturbing that particular spot where the access road comes off. That's the area where it's very close, like where you can make the argument that it's within, it's within the buffer for the piece of the wetland or stream that's in the next town. Again, there's no delineation to hang our hats on for it, but it's just looking at the mapping, it's pretty close.
Would they possibly accept our findings? So I guess the question is, who is it going to be the one who's going to determine that? So we're like, who's going to know what to do as far as, well, at least I'm not in Milbra. At least do something.
On the street, yeah.
Um.
I'm not sure. No matter, definitely, no matter what there's. Unless it's completely changed, unless he removes that whole parking thing.
I think it takes the road out.
That's within the buffer, but it's not in the Town of Clinton. That's a big Town of Clinton one.
To enable you to, to get the next search. The other question, what is the buffer for Clinton? They have a fifty-foot buffer?
Exactly. I don't know what they're.
I think it's a hundred. I did.
I think, I thought it was a hundred, but I don't want to say that.
I think it's a hundred.
So if the fire department recommends that they do go ahead and do the access road around the rear side of the structure, probably does make sense for them to go to, to the Clinton. But if a fire department says, really not necessary at all, we can get easy access.
But if the fire department says, really not necessary at all, we can get easy access, we really don't need it. And and you guys decide not to build that access road around the rear of the structure, then is that what we're
That's my My understanding. But for the parking lot situation over there, that's all you, all town of Washington.
Right, so the only reason you would have to go to the town of Clinton is if the fire department says, yeah, I think if this road is really good and maybe our best access back there, if there's some issue, and you think, well, we should really do this, then, you know, you'd have to go to the town of Clinton and then they would be involved. But if they come out and you feel satisfied that 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 they're saying, you know, this is really not necessary at all, we can get easy access, or what, you know, whatever they advise you. And then you decide that you don't really need that access, then I think it's all town of Washington, so that's
So you basically wait, wait for the fire department to make its decision.
Yeah, heading out.
All right, great.
Or if your client, if your client says, we want that road, then you're giving
Yeah, that too.
So I mean, fire department's one thing, but you could be giving your marketing orders as we all are, and then you'll be making two applications.
Good point. Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks a lot, good night.
Thank you.
This is not an easy It's not an easy application for us to review, it's a complicated
Yeah, I understand. It's a, it's a lot of things, it's a work in progress, I'm working, figuring it out as it goes, I get it. Thank you for the time.
Are you here for Woodner?
Oh! So what's the answer? What's the buffer in, what's the buffer?
Well, off the top of my head, I, I
Okay.
I just have other questions, do you guys maybe have, do you think it was done or?
Let's see if Woodner is
We have one more, I think he just stepped into the restroom, but
That's gonna be some application. I think it's gonna be an interesting application.
It's starting to smack of the solar panel gate field. You know, things just won't die, I mean, you can drive a stake to the heart of this thing. And then it takes back, yeah, it's like a vampire. This is the
I didn't see the new map, and I didn't see how they rewrapped everything, so they're not going into
Hello, are you here for the Woodner application? Yes, could you come forward?
Please come up.
Sure.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you so much, what's your name?
Death of Juris.
So if you can talk to us about what it is you'd like to do.
Basically, she has an existing farm, I believe existing apartment, it's all legal, it's meant to be a legal farm. By definition, New York state law or New York state ag and market law. It's approximately thirteen hundred square feet. She sits there, she divided in half to two bedroom apartments existing now, divided in half to two studio apartments. So the load on the septic system stays the same. Just give a little, well, you know, is equivalent to what was there. You know, the reason is, you're trying to provide employee housing is, you know, another way to attract employees. Tough to live in Milbrook and Chapel Horseshit.
Is it, it's, it's, it's a horse operation? Okay.
And there are no small apartments locally, so.
There, the only, yeah, there's a, there's a main house for the owner, and then there's an apartment over the barn. Which is built back in sixty, I guess.
What's the occupancy at the degree? How many folks live in there now, how many?
Well, it's, it's, was it two bedroom apartment? You know, I had the tenant's lawn that was up there, I don't know what their situation was, maybe it was a family or what.
So if you're thinking it would be more appealing instead of having two employees living in one apartment, you know, each sleeping in their own bedrooms, but sharing the apartment space, that it would be more appealing to get staff to come if you had two separate apartments and they each had their own bedroom.
Yeah.
So are you adding a kitchen and a bathroom to each?
Yes, yes. I don't know if you all see the plans, but
Yeah, I do, yeah, we all see them. Same, same foothold, same, same structure.
No exterior renovations.
I just like to look at the lines. There you go. So this was the existing
Oh, what do we do?
Oh.
That pops up.
Milbrook one, two, three.
High security, Milbrook one, two, three. What's the network?
No one's living there now.
Yeah, I mean, the reason that, you know, she kind of decides to move with this is that, you know, ten o'clock. Nobody kept expecting that we were going this route.
So you can have two employee residences on the same site when you originally had one, and that's a benefit to attract employees, obviously, yes.
Yeah, I mean, she's not, she's, you know, having big families there, she's
Yeah, I could do by that, be more appealing to have your own place instead of share it with
Oh, yeah.
And she's not thinking about this as a short term rental or anything like that?
Yeah, for farm, farm employees.
Aaron, what, what should we do?
Okay, so, under your code, and this is in the APO, the agricultural retention overlay, and if you look at code, there is a special permit required for employee housing for farm workers, so I just think we can get around that. Planning board has to
Yeah, there you go.
Issue a special permit for this, which requires a public hearing also. There also is provisions for site plan in the code, but I don't think, given the fact that what's happening here, you can probably waive the site plan requirement, I think you've already agreed to do that. So really, we're just looking at a public hearing that's required, no referrals to the county are necessary. It's a type two action for seeker. So if you're comfortable setting a public hearing for this, because it is a special permit, and all special permits require one, you can do that.
Just, my comment is, you know, I'm not interested in slowly crossing it down or creating problems. Reading the guidelines by the ag markets law.
We were looking at that, and the problem is, our law says that we do, even though the ag markets law says something else. And so we, what I think we would like to do is just make this as quick and easy as possible. So that, because we, we're stuck with what the law here says, but there's also this other one. So I think what we're trying to do is just make this as easy as possible, understanding that the ag and markets law wants wants you to have a streamlined process. So I think the best that we can do is waive the site plan requirement, there's no exterior work anyway. Put it on for a public hearing next month. And then, you know, assuming that there, there's no issues, which I can't imagine there will be, that then you get the special. I think that's kind of the best way that we can get
It would be the same timeline, so you're not suffering in any way by going through with this special permit. I mean, it's not on the timeline, you're not suffering from that, we're not delaying your project. We're not.
Well, I mean, I could go to the route of, you know, trying to review this. I called them up, there are three, six months to review it, so.
Exactly, I would love to do, I know what you're saying, and it would be great, and I think maybe that's something that the board needs to look at. We need to maybe review this law and see if we can create an exception that we delineate in advance before somebody's before us, that says, well, if somebody is doing a farm employee housing, we can waive the special part, something like that. But we need to do that separate and
If you look at this, I mean, this looks like, you know, the case that they took, that somebody took to ag markets and said, hey, this is what I want to do, and they said, hey, we're writing these guidelines for this, just for this. I mean, you know, it'd be different to say, hey, she wants a parked trailer there or something that I could see, yes, that's, and I actually almost referenced that in the guidelines, just one of the things I read. But this is just a very simple apartment, and I'm not sure even if it was a residence, we wouldn't have to go through this, just a private residence.
No, it wasn't just a building permit.
Yeah, so you put in, you know, in a burden on an agricultural, you know, enterprise that's really
I think all of those points are quite valid, and it led to some productive conversations outside of here and looking at the application. So while it might not directly benefit you in this circumstance, it could result in change. But the determination was just made to as expeditiously as possible to just go through with the permit process, because I do think it would be more timely and costly to try to have ag markets review it and delay.
I have said my
We appreciate that.
You know, so she can get, I mean
We do see this come in front of our board more regularly than you would think, and so there, we should
We should have a process for this. We should.
But the best I think we can do right now is to put you on the very next meeting with the public hearing. Should be, do it first, be done, yeah.
Exactly, we'll put you on first, exactly.
I want to go back to my question.
Sure.
You said, the answer is that could be a new requirement for a change in the septic system, and I asked, how many people have you lived here?
In theory is, you know, she's looking for, hopefully, young men that are interested in working, so it'd just be one person each apartment.
Two individuals.
I mean, the idea is
Same number of bedrooms.
Yeah, technically, yeah.
But you could end up with a couple.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
No, I, I understand, I was just, I was just asking why that was the first thing you said, I just wanted to
I guess they could have a spouse and that could be two people and
But still
Yeah, which you can't
So I, I don't know how the septic system, but I believe it's, you know, if you have two bedrooms, there's assuming two people or so forth.
It's by bedroom.
Four people.
The county uses two people per bedroom. Right, so four people, so, I mean, I can't imagine, they're studios, they're small, but I mean, the next
Okay, so I think, I think we need to classify it as a type two for seeker. So can I get a motion for that? Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? And next, I need a motion for a public hearing, to put this on for a public hearing next month.
So my, or what is it, March?
Seconded.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay.
That's March seventh.
I didn't, I didn't My back is turning, not purposely.
But we did have some discussions about a process.
Awkward.
Yes.
Okay. I handed out the
I'm sorry.
Those guidelines at Leslie, I'm looking at my notes. Does anybody else have anything else to bring up?
With regards to the guidelines, I can't be here, I'm right on my side.
Okay.
I might be able to call
Oh, I see, it's almost camouflage.
Um, so can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'm jumping on that one.
Wait, we'll give Andrew seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
All right. See you all, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.